Meeting call is ordered today is Tuesday, September sixteenth. It is now six oh five P M. Town Council Equities is still with permission. Chair, please have a prayer.
We ask for the wisdom to make good decisions, to speak with confidence and listen with compassion as we work together to create a better way of life for people blessed while we came here.
Chair, please have a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Don't mistake me as a Miami fan.
Roll call. Council President Goslin.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Yeah.
Councilman Luchardi.
Here.
Councilman Dennison.
Here.
Councilman Messier. Town of Coventry.
Here.
Town of Sitewick. City of Cranston, City of Warwick, Town of West Greenwich. Forum is declared. First item is minutes of previous meeting approval of the minutes from the meetings held on April twenty second, twenty twenty five sewer commission public hearing number one. Minutes of the April twenty second, twenty twenty five sewer commission meeting, minutes of the May sixth, twenty twenty five sewer commission public hearing number two, and minutes of the May eighth, twenty twenty five sewer commission meeting.
What approval of the minutes?
Move second, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Before we move into reports, I just want to point out, we do, we do not have the back TV on anymore moving forward. Um, just because of the situation we had at last meeting, so in case something like shouldn't happen again, but in case something like that happens, we're not going to use the back screen for presentations. Superintendent's report.
Evening, Council.
Welcome back.
It's been a few months since I've seen everybody. So here's the superintendent report for August twenty twenty five. Our average daily flow was three point six million gallons per day. Our maximum flow was eleven point eight million gallons per day, and our minimum was one million gallons per day. Uh, for our C B O D removal, it was at two point three milligrams per liter, which was ninety nine percent removal. And T S S also had ninety nine percent removal at two point six milligrams per liter. Our phosphorus limit uh was zero point zero eight milligrams per liter, so we had a great month as far as laboratory testing. For our sludge removal, we had four hundred and sixty two tons go to Epic, uh, none to the landfill, so another month in a row that we've just been going to the same uh sludge hauling company since January. We haven't gone anywhere else but then since the beginning of the year, so that's great. For sewer backups, there was one on the private line in Hollow Circle. For odor complaints, we had four from Frontward Drive and one from Enfield Street. As far as facility violations, we had zero for the month of August. And that is my report.
Any questions for Jeff?
How's that, how's that working out with the new company?
New company as far as sludge hauling?
Yeah.
So far, it's working good. Uh, we've been contacting with them a little bit right now. They're looking to see if they can uh get the dumpsters cleaner, line them before it comes to us, so it's less work on our team. And we'll work on their team to look into buying a yard next to the rail yard, so something might happen in twenty twenty six, it might not, so we're in discussion, so. As far as that, it might make it easier for our team, but we'll have to wait and see what happens there. Other than that, overall, it's working well for the facility.
It's just nice to know that you have something consistent and you don't have to decide, oh, we have to go to the landfill and to make it by a certain time and.
We're not making game date uh game time decisions that during the day, hey, can we come here today? So that it's really nice for us as far as not having to worry about getting it out of the facility.
Oh, I will say that um I happened to be behind a truck about three weeks ago. And, you know, I, I always was curious and wondered if really, if that could be a smell going through the neighborhood. It was definitely a smell that is, uh, when you're behind them in, in traffic, my three-year-old granddaughter was behind me and said, oh, P U, yeah, so. So it's definitely, yes, yeah, but, but, so it does happen, so if they could turn that up, that'd be great, yes.
Well, if they can drive on it much more as fast as possible, again, France should look good.
You can ask that.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Industrial pretreatment report.
Good evening, just like Jeff, uh, it's fall time because we're now, the summer is over because pretreatment and the sewer commission.
Pretty can, Jim.
Yeah, well, it's the Italian in the, it just goes that way. Okay, uh, I'm going to be reporting for pretreatment for the month of August. Uh, our significant industrial user, Farmera, um, self submitted their monthly self-monitoring report and all permit limits were in compliance. Amgen has asked us for a non-routine discharge. They're, they're experimenting with different product lines. And when they do that, their discharge is a little bit different, so um we just monitored their discharge and we gave them permission to do that. With regards to private wastewater treatment facilities, uh Eagle Nest has submitted um a revised uh draft of their O N M. We had some final comments and we expect the final um document to be submitted uh by the end of the year. Um, the bro, the program also contacted sixteen hundred Division Street. Um, that's the Westerman property. And uh when we investigated, there've been two new tenants that have gone into the building without filling out a commercial application. So we put them unnoticed so they can fill out the application. And we also found out that there is a new manager for this facility, um, and that will be revising, they will be revising the O N M manual to reflect that. During the, the month, we also inspected nine uh restaurants within the town of West Warwick. Uh, with the exception of three, um, there was no problem. Uh Fusion Latin and Caribbean Cuisine, one of the oil recovery devices uh was taken out of service. And the other one was not functioning. So we put them unnoticed that we want the other oil recovery back online and the second one to be fixed. Uh, they were some, they were given a notice of violation and a fine of a hundred dollars. With regards to Wise Guy Deli, again, when we visited the site, we found that the grease recovery device was not operational. Again, they received a, a fine and uh requested that they repair their system and we'll go back and check next month. Fry bread uh catering, uh, they have opened without submitting plans or filing a discharge application. So we met with the facility, inspected it, um, and we will um follow up with them with uh because they didn't have a grease recovering device online, online. With regards to maintenance facility, scrubbed up, there's going to be a lot of scrubbed up, so this is the one in Warwick. Um, submitted a maintenance slip uh for their oil and grease separator, and that's being done. Uh, the program also visited M K uh Fuel and Market on Providence Street. They began uh, we were visiting them because they began to repair their sewer line. Construction has not yet been completed, but we'll stay in touch with them. Plans um were reviewed for paint body on Pro, on Providence Street. The submission was consistent with the regulations and a letter was issued. We also received plans for Belize, which is the Genesis in West Warwick. Uh, those plans were not uh consistent with the regulations and um so we let it uh issued a letter um that they need to revise the plans. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Jim? Thank you, Jim. Next is financial report. Good evening, I say. Unordered operating and debt expenses fiscal year twenty twenty five totaled eight million, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars, which was ninety-four percent of the annual budget. We'll plus have to wait and see what the audited numbers come back at. But that's complete. Yet a date operating and debt expenses fiscal year twenty six through the end of August told one million, five hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred forty, forty-nine dollars, which is fifteen percent of the approved budget. That number will increase next month when we're back because we made our September bond payment for approximately one point two million dollars. Overtime for the month of August was eleven thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars, which is seven percent of the budget. Yet a date overtime is twenty-one thousand, three dollars, which is thirteen percent of the approved budget, so we're a little on the budget, two months into the year on overtime. And we have a year date savings and salaries of twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. Sludge removal, everybody's favorite, my own, cost through the end of August totaled one hundred seventy thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars, which is fifteen percent of the annual budget, so we are a little bit on the budget on sludge removal through the end of August. Fiscal year twenty twenty six sewer usage and industrial collections through the end of August totaled two million, six hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred four dollars, which is thirty-three percent of the total build. Prior year sewer usage collections through the end of the month totaled one hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, of which eight thousand, seven ninety-three is penalty interest. Fiscal year twenty twenty six sewer assessment collections totaled ninety-eight thousand, six hundred forty-seven total bill. And I must admit, I did not obviously have a high score, total three ninety-nine, twenty-four, four ninety-five. Uh, the interest accrued with Senate will bank with the C D that we entered into in April that will be applied at maturity in April, twenty twenty-six. I did get an updated number this week. It is not forty-five thousand, eight ninety through the end of the month. It'll be fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. That's hard for council president. Any questions for Tony? Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Resolutions. First one is S C twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four rescinding bid award for analytical laboratory services.
Remove the resolution.
Give explanation.
Alright, so the facility went out to bid for analytical services a couple of months ago. Uh, we went with the lowest bidder at the time. We had references. I checked the references and they all came out well, so we used the company from July first to early July twenty-fourth. Uh, during that time, we weren't receiving reports. Usually they're about seven days out, so a week out. We weren't getting them in a timely manner. Uh, when we started getting them back, I was noticing a lot of irregularly, irregularities with the reports, so um. After that couple of weeks, I decided I called the old vendor back, asked them if they would take us back. Uh, they reached out to me about ten minutes later and said, Jack, we'll take you back at your previous price before the bid, so we decided to go back to them. Uh, for the month of July with the new company, we uh had around fourteen violations through our permit. I got that down to about four violations. I've been in contact with D E M throughout that process, just let them know that we're having a lot of issues with this company. We're going to go back to our old company, so they were very, they were understanding and there should not be any consequences coming out of this because of the issues.
Any questions for Jeff?
My understanding is that the company that we decided to move away from was very apologetic to that they uh.
Yes.
Seemed to have some issues.
They had some issues, so, yes, their main plant is out of Massachusetts and their smaller plant is in Rhode Island and the smaller plant we were having the trouble with, so it's just. They might be good in one state, but unfortunately they weren't good in our state at this time.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Were there any financial repercussions of these violations?
No, not at this time, and I've not uh been made aware that there will be, okay.
Any other comment?
No, thank you for referencing the old ones, though, because if, if someone just pulls up S C twenty twenty-five sixteen, they're going to think that's who we went with, so.
Mm-hmm.
Let's make sure that, and Sarah, that maybe you make sure that both of those are together, so there's no. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it?
Thank you, Council.
Resolution S C twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five change order number two, East Natick Interceptor brothers.
Move the resolution.
Sorry, move second, Jim.
Okay, um, as you may recall, it was the summer that we, we had that meeting where you had a change order to um National Water Main on the repairs to the East Natick Interceptor. At that time, I told you, I indicated to you that there would be a subsequent change order, not to National Water Main, but to Boilin Fogarty, the contractor who was doing the work. Because in doing the lining on the East Natick line, we found that, well, let me give you a quick back so they can understand this. The forty-two inch or the East Natick interceptor was put in in the early nineteen seventies. That replaced an existing twenty-four inch. That twenty-four inch went along Water Street by Fishbowl and then crossed the road and went behind the properties by the Sacred Art Church, Saint Joseph's, et cetera. Well, that was still active on, once it crossed uh Providence Street, but on the side of where Fishbowl is and where the um Water Street. There were two connections that remained to that twenty-four inch that shouldn't have been there because it goes stagnant. So those, there were two of them. One was a, an individual uh connection, the other one was a complete street that we had to connect to. So we, once the lining was complete, we moved the, the flow from the twenty-four into the existing, the new forty-two inch interceptor. So that change order reflects that additional work. That is all part of the grant application or S R F application for the East Natick. The East Natick line and that project is now completed one hundred percent. Um, so, and it worked out very well as far as the cleaning and lining go.
Any questions for Jim? Hearing none.
Jim, I'm sorry, how did we come up with Boilin Fogarty as the, the company?
Uh, the uh town picked them based on of the.
State M P A.
State, state M P A.
These are the same folks that held Coeset hostage for two and a half years with less than stellar work. That's why I'm concerned.
It is, and it isn't, okay? I agree. I'll reserve comment on Coeset Road because.
The name is the name.
Yeah, the name is the name, uh, but Boilin Fogarty does a good job. Um, Coeset.
Everywhere else, apparently. Just not on Coeset.
I.
Actually, they've completed this.
Yes.
And it's done, and we had no issues with Boilin Fogarty on this particular job.
That's correct. So I guess there's no point in saying no to this one.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jim? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Ayes have it? Public comment. Public comment on sewer on. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Take a couple minute recess until we just change for YouTube.
You're going to go, we had to go over it to council's YouTube, yeah. Yeah, we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Coventry, for being here tonight. Meeting call is ordered today is Tuesday, September sixteenth. It is now six twenty-four P M. Town Council, meeting in the town council chambers, eleven seventy Main Street, Westmoreland, Rhode Island.
Roll call. Councilman Dennison.
Here.
Councilman Luchardi.
Here.
Councilman Messier.
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson.
Here.
Council President Goslin.
Here.
Forum is declared. Consent agenda. Free vote of minutes from the September second, twenty twenty-five town council meeting and cancellation of taxes in the amount of seven thousand, ten dollars and sixty-five cents.
Move the consent agenda.
Move second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it?
Ordinances. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five, amending chapter eleven, motor vehicles and traffic, article two, operation, section forty-seven, motor vehicle restricted routes, an appendix fee, traffic ordinances, no parking, Coolus Road.
Move the ordinance.
Move consecutive discussion?
Go ahead. Um, this was about, about a month ago. Have we, has anybody reached out to anybody living on that street, or is everybody aware of it that lives on that street that this is coming into play? Possibly.
Is there anybody here from Coolus Road by any chance? One state.
Just a note how it is on G G.
Um, I, so I've driven it uh a few times in the last month and um. Can, we were talking about two different issues, I think, at the last meeting, but uh, and I actually called Chief Earl because he was, he was a player in the social traffic committee regarding this. So I'm, I'll be voting right here. No.
Well, you can't view, but.
So I'm going to vote to put the no park alone, uh, and I'm going to go by Chief's recommendation with the understanding that I'm not trying to open up Pandora's box yet. Because I understand the traffic problem and it's not just the parking problem, it's more traffic is, is worse than parking, but um. So I wanted to restrict my vote to this, this particular issue.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I, I think everybody knows where I stand on this. I am not one to take away the ability of people to use, enjoy, and utilize fully their own property. I, I've been there for nearly twenty-five years, is my opinion, that may differ from the Traffic Safety Committee, that there is no safety concern. I drive that every day, multiple times every day. I'll be honest, today's the first time in a long time, including weekends, that I saw more than one car parked. And the one car is the same car we've been talking about for over a month. Um, again, I, I can't vote to take somebody's ability to park in front of their house away when there's no, there's no real traffic or, or safety concern, in my opinion. Um, the other thing I have to say about this is I have a big concern. It's the fifth whereas, notice having been given by the traffic committee to all persons affected by said amendments. I don't think that was done. I don't think we can inform this if it wasn't properly. If notification wasn't given to those affected.
And Sarah, at the last meeting, you told us that that is not, well, you wouldn't have any to do with it. It's the traffic committee, so.
Well, I think you just said that it's not a requirement, like, right, and that's.
Not of the ordinance amendment.
Oh, when you're sitting here reading an ordinance that says whereas.
I know, no, I.
But I'm sure they're talking about it being published. I assume.
Regardless, nothing.
Well, I.
Well, the mannequin of paper had to be advertised, I hope.
Was it?
Ordinance does.
It was.
Don't have. Well, then, so what, do we have any idea what that notice was given to all persons affected by said amendments?
Twenty-one homes in that affected range from Cedar up to uh the top of Coolus, and I wasn't about to go start knocking on doors asking them if they got notice, but. Unless they will provide a notice, I'm going to despair to vote on something tonight when they didn't have a chance to express their concerns in a public meeting.
Yep.
Well, you've got two problems. First one is prior to this ordinance, there was nothing regarding general ordinances and notices to those people that are going to be affected by it. By combining them into this, it clearly states notice had, having been given, which is past tense. So unless the traffic committee, unless the traffic committee gave notice, or the town gave notice, or the police department gave notice, you'd, you'd have an issue with the interpretation of this particular statute, should you try to enforce it. So. I would table it and get the notice out, but everything moving forward, and that decision's going to have to be made by this council, which body is going to have to provide the notice, whether it should be the clerk or some other independent um body, like the traffic commission.
So just to clarify, the notice should have to be given to all, I mean, anybody on both sides of the road, or just the, yeah, anybody on, in or that, or that entire street, I mean, I'm, I just. I just want to make sure we're clear on this, and then we're going to have the issue again when we bring it back to the meeting, so.
I think years ago, the traffic committee used to notify.
Yes, I, that's why, that's why I was confused the last time, because at times they have, I want to say, at the time, I, I think it depends on who was running it, which major, whatever. It would be that group they used to notify, because. People would actually come to, like, tonight, there's nobody here from Coolus Road, which is shocking, even the two parties that were involved aren't even here, right? So they've been, it's been four weeks, they may have forgotten about it to come to this meeting, I don't know, but there's not one soul from Coolus Road, and if you're going to. No park the entire side of Coolus Road from Coeset to Longston, was it Longston?
It was to the top.
Top, yeah, it wasn't the whole, it was the whole.
Well, part of it's already covered because of the old station.
Right, yeah.
Club, so up to that road is already.
So for, for nobody to come here and say, I'm against this or I'm for it, it's kind of.
Again, you should be on the side of caution, because under procedural law, notice is the first thing you look at to determine whether or not people were notified that this was actually going to be a violation, now should they park in front of their property. So I would just suggest giving notice to them, and then on a separate issue in the future, going forward, determine how notice is going to be provided and which bodies going to provide it.
Then we figure out who's going to send it down, like.
I would say, I'd be happy to bring it to the safety, bring it up and get back to you.
Okay. And then until we're going to table.
amend my motion to table this item.
Till the.
Until, tell me the date.
October seventh. October seventh, the next meeting.
October seventh, yeah.
We have a caller added over there, just.
Before we do all this, I, I just want to remind everybody once again, what we're asking.
Yeah.
People on this room to do is to not park in front of their own homes. And I said it in the open before to anybody supporting this, and I'm going to extend that to everybody that's sitting up here. Again, would you be in favor of not being parked in front of your own home? I'm just going to leave it like that and ask you to consider that. As you ponder what to do with this, this ordinance.
Or are we talking about the other side of the street?
Okay.
That's why I'm, that's where I'm looking at this as, you know, I'm going by that, the black, well, the black car that is there. I believe this.
Which won't change.
No, no, not at all, not at all.
Black car will stay there.
Of course, but we're looking at the other side of the street going halfway down.
So.
That's why I'm taking this, that's why I'm boarding yes on it, that's what I'm taking.
So if the black car hadn't been parking there?
But that's irrelevant, I'm looking at this side of the street versus that side of the street. I don't live there. I don't have a stake in this game at all.
Yeah.
So I'm just going by what was brought up at the last meeting and then, and obviously.
So what that means is that now people on one side of the street are going to have cars parked in front of their homes where they would otherwise not. And that's another consideration.
Possibly, right.
Possibly, and we have to think everything that's on the table here is, is possible. So that means all the, the parking gets forced to one side of the road, so some people cannot park in front of their own home. When they have an event at their home, birthday party or Christmas celebration, they're going to tell people to go park in front of their neighbor's house.
I just want to point out one thing, safety wise, and Mark, I agree with you, every car is on one side of the road, and right now, the issue is that one car makes two cars not pass. You park everybody on one side of the road and Mark leaves his house coming to Coeset as he's passing all the cars on the right-hand side. He's, he's into the other lane and the other car is trying to come up over the top of the hill, and guess what?
It's much easier to navigate a car or two, and that's really what we're talking about. This isn't a big, but if there's a, if there's a party, and I have seen that where somebody has a party, um.
That happens.
Now.
That's a point.
It happened on a, it could happen on anybody's street.
And now you've got a whole line of cars, it's more difficult to navigate that than, you know, waving somebody on, go around, then I'll go around. Now you've got a whole line of cars to deal with. So again, I, I don't agree with it. I, I will never vote for it, so that's where I stop.
I, I think you just said open Pandora's box. One of my concerns would be is how many other streets are we going to do that on? I mean, there's other streets, and I pointed out last time, in Natick. If there's someone, it, it would be very difficult to get by, and what are we going to do? We're going to, are we going to enforce something, and do we have the, even the manpower to enforce it, I guess would be.
I look, I always look at my, my Phoenix side from Main Street to the tents. That's a congested, they park on both sides of the street, it's apartments, it's whatever, and next thing you know, it's the same thing. We've had cars get hit, we've had uh people parked on sidewalks get hit, it's, it's, it's.
I'm, I'm looking at just this issue.
Really push for anything yet because of the parking issues.
I'm, I'm, if this issue right here, um, I think the whole town is congested, the parking and traffic is taking me thirty-five minutes to get from Coeset Avenue to Providence, Providence Street at Saint Joseph's Church and back, which is awful.
I, I've said it, this is, this is, this is the toughest town from Phoenix to, to Murphy Highway.
We're going to put in, we're going to put in more condos.
It's longer than it means the way.
We're putting in what, what, two hundred, three hundred more condos everywhere in town, which means what, five, six hundred more cars? And there's no way out of it. There's no way to the highway except driving through town. And there's no way out of it. There's no way to the highway except driving through town.
Council is starting to get a little.
I'm watching. I understand. Thank you. All right.
I'm gonna set.
So I'm gonna set, I'm gonna set.
Second.
Motion. I'm in favor of table?
Aye.
Aye.
Table it till the October seventh, just to clarify.
Yes.
And notice is gonna be sent.
Notice will be sent to those residents if they happen to be watching or.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash six, amending section five point one, table of use regulations, non-residential uses, retail business age. Cannabis retail sales in section five point three, special use permit. Seven cannibal retail cannabis retail sales of the West Ward zoning code as amended.
Move the resolution.
Second ordinance.
Ordinance too, yeah, sorry about that. Move the ordinance.
Move the second discussion.
So obviously, I wasn't here last meeting, um but I did watch a couple days later when the feed finally came up. I did, I did watch the uh the footage, and I did have a couple of, I wouldn't say concerns, but questions. Um. How does the the zoning that we're putting forth here differ from, say, a liquor store? Are there, I know the only, you guys, if I'm not incorrect, you pared it down just to schools, correct? Five hundred feet from schools.
To follow the state law.
Right, we're mirroring the 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 what's mandated by the state, correct? But is this different than a liquor store?
In what way?
In other words, could we, does the zoning allow for a liquor store to be within five hundred feet of? Whatever it might.
That's a that's a different statute in a different ordinance, so with the cannabis issue, it's all basically from what Al said, and I agree with him. It's gonna be state driven, and the only thing that the town can add is something that's not more than what the state is at. So you have the five hundred feet from the schools, right now. Ah, I'm not gonna try to gauge whether or not we have any liquor stores within five hundred feet of any schools or educational institutions, but if they do. It could be a grandfather issue that I'm not thinking of right now, but this has got nothing to do, one doesn't have anything to do with the other.
I'll I'll tell you, my my largest concern is something President Coswell brought up with daycare centers. So we don't want per zoning, you're not gonna allow dispensary within five hundred feet of.
I I believe it's got that in.
I'm mistaken, sorry.
Am I mistaken?
Dave.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Al.
Yes, the 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 this ordinance exactly follows the state statute. Which says that. They will, you'll submit your application to the CCC. They notify the town that the application has been submitted. The matter then goes to zoning. The town has forty five days to let the. Uh CCC know that the application is in a proper zone. And that they have met the various stipulations that I put in the audience in in the ordinance. Those stipulations are the stipulations that by statute, the town is allowed to make. As I said when I first presented it, once the ordinance was completed, I sent it to. The CCC legal counsel, they have approved it. The only change that was made since it was first submitted to you is that there were questions about all of the different. Distances I had from various locations. I had put those in strictly as a checklist for your consideration. The only uh distance that is mandated is five hundred feet or less from a school. All the other distances from churches, from other cannabis places, but there I've removed all of those. So right now, the ordinance says that when when the town receives. An app a notice from CCC that the application has been filed. The zoning board must meet and report back to them within forty five days that our zoning requirements. Which meet the meet the statutory. Requirements have been complied with.
Any questions, Bernard?
So just to confirm, my my original thought was correct in that the only. The only stipulation. Deals with schools only, whether private or public, but schools K through twelve.
Yes, that's man, that's mandated.
Okay, and this ordinance does not take into account playgrounds, um daycares, other um. Youth centers, things like that.
I removed all of those after the conversation uh that the I that the board had at the. Uh, when it was presented uh back in August, uh because I thought that those those distances, the council did not want. So I removed everything but what was mandated.
Understood, understood. So within the ordinance, under section E, findings to be made by the zoning board. There's some language in there that does speak to those other things, such as um parks, playgrounds, playfields, youth center, licensed daycare centers. Or other locations where.
Those are.
Minors. But there's not specific distance.
Those are things that the uh the zoning board can take into consideration as to. Whether or not they feel it is a fit uh. Fit place for them. They're not mandated.
Kind of where I have a sticky point, to be honest with you.
So Al, so so we're making a decision here tonight to pass this, but the zoning board is allowed to. Make another decision.
He's only what, Mark?
Now notify us, right? We have no say over what what we choose, if we don't like what they say, then it doesn't matter.
No, that it, once it goes to the CCC. The CCC notifies the town. The zoning board, the town has forty five days for the zoning board to state. Number one, it is in a zone in which retail sales is allowed. And number two, it has met the standards, the standards that are in the ordinance. The ones in in section C are those that are permitted by the state statute. The the standards the in section E, the findings, those are mandated. Findings that the zoning board must make.
Well, but I I I agree with Mark's point that. We we had a discussion to remove those in the distances, but then, and and I think what Jason Jason just said was. The zoning board can now say, yeah.
That that's that's within the zoning board's prerogative on any issue.
Yeah, well, I I would disagree with that.
But conversely, you know, we could have a zoning board with people who may feel that it doesn't belong at all, so therefore. Five thousand feet is too close, and we don't want that either.
I think I think having them there might might confuse even the zoning board when they see that ordinance to to me, like, or, I mean. We probably don't need those things in that.
If I may, to prevent future legal challenges, I think this really needs to be looked at, and so it's pristine when it's presented, instead of trying, there's confusion right now.
Yeah, if we're confused, then it's gonna be.
Right, so Mike, again.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion again to table this to the.
Which which specific uh item in C?
No, it's in E, and there is no D either, so so I don't know, we went from, it goes from C to to E, but E says findings to be made by the zoning board. So it's putting that back in to give the zoning board the ability to say.
Yeah.
Even though the council said, no, the only issue is we're gonna go with the state guidance.
Yeah.
No, but you know what? The zoning board can decide that the proposed location is gonna adversely affect.
Yeah, I think I think having in there kind of.
That that is, that is a, that is a power given to the zoning board by the state legislature.
But if it's already there, we probably.
I'm not sure that, yeah, I I got, I I I'm gonna second Jay's motion to table.
I have a motion and a second, no more conversation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Just a clarification, are you on table one, not to.
Period, sir, yes, October second.
Uh, I will send a, I will send a draft uh for you to comment on prior to the meeting.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash nine, amending sections two, general purposes, three definitions, five use regulations, eight modifications. And twenty two administration enforcement, the West Ward zoning.
Move the ordinance.
Second, move second, discussion?
That is strictly the changes that the legislative legislature mandated to our zoning code.
So this is, for lack of a better term, this is another hands tied situation, right, Al?
This is, this is the language of the law, of the statutes.
Right, right.
That I took from the if 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 we, if this isn't passed. It applies anyway, and I think I said the last time, the my basic reason. For asking you to do it in a in this ordinance is so that every time one of these matters comes up. Uh Marilyn or Bob or I don't have to check our ordinance and then run it against the statutes, uh which are gonna control anyway.
And and last time, Al, there were there were some distances uh attached this. I I didn't see them here, but I assume those were changed. We made one change on that. Um, to make sure that the business and business park, the side of the park were.
Wasn't in this one. That was in the, that was change me in the other ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Any public comments on this ordinance? Eric None, I'll take a roll call, hope, Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Very bad?
Yes.
I hope yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Business licenses.
Motion to move all of them, F zero one, zero two, and zero three.
Second, move the second, the only discussion I have um. Twenty four hour virtual license, kind of gets confusing. Their business hours are five AM to two P, two PM, which is fine, but does that give them the ability to open up twenty four seven?
So it does, however, they um if you guys only approve it, they're only looking to open at five AM, which is why they have to apply for this license. Uh unfortunately, for that one hour, they have to apply.
Anything before six.
Anything before six, you have to have. An additional hour's virtual, is actually what it's.
What it really is, but it has to be. Okay. That makes more sense.
They have to come back to.
If you want to put on, I mean, in your motion.
Put a restriction on it.
Yeah, it it can be five AM.
Yeah, but some of us, all time is on better round, you know, some breakfast place used to open up at two AM and I. Yeah. Um, any other comments? Any public comments on these licenses? Eric None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it, and welcome to Westwood Cafe Luca, or how do you say the middle name?
Aristotle.
Aristotle Luca, welcome. The event license for uh Health and Wellness Expo is approved, and. Call not, your raffle license has been approved for two pair commission. Good luck, and uh.
Thank you.
Looking forward to have another breakfast spot to go.
Yeah.
Sixty one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, school building committee update.
Good evening. So we're getting into crunch time as far as preparing for the referendum. Um, as everyone's aware, our printed material is. Been approved and in the process of being printed, some of its was delivered um yesterday. Um, a couple of the bigger boards will be delivered tomorrow, um the set for the front of for our lobby. Um, will hopefully be here tomorrow morning. The superintendent and I are alternating schedules, so people aren't overwhelmed with phone calls. Um, and I have a message out to Kendra at the Times um to. Update her recent article um with the voting information and the the other support materials for the for the Times. The. The school department is handling a lot of their events, open houses that are happening um this week and next. Tabling at various sporting events coming up, and as I mentioned, the superintendent will be putting out bright out, bright arrow messages. Um, starting this afternoon, and again, I'm gonna stagger with them, so I'll have a code red that will go out tomorrow evening. Um, and then each week with some other tidbit of information, um directing people to the Westwood. School projects website, the town's website, we'll have that information up tomorrow as well, and. We, on October first, we're proposing having sort of our next big informational section, so if people aren't going to a school event or a sporting event. Um, at the high school, we'll have an informational session on October first. I believe we're gonna start at six PM, but we'll finalize that shortly. Um, we'll we'll have the display boards up, answer any questions, um and obviously encourage people to get informed, so. There'll be at least four code reds between now and then, and I assume a similar amount for bright arrow.
I know I missed the last thing, anything else, too? Um. I noticed the news media is like Channel ten, twelve, and six usually do a little bit of advertising on the day of the vote. Um, but we reached out to them and then.
I know the superintendent has had communications with at least one. She's already done, you know, a pre start of the school year interview, and she made them aware. And she has arrangements to get back with them, but we'll we'll make sure that the other ones are aware of it as well.
They're sending the mask out, it's Thursday morning.
Well, but but. Probably starts.
Thursday.
This Thursday, two days from today, yeah, so. I mean, I think, again, personally, I I wanna make sure that anybody watching that they realize how much we're gonna get reversed for this, so even though the. Bond is for seventy one points.
Up to.
Yeah, up to seventy one million.
Up to seventy one million, but we were gonna get reversed.
Sixty eight point three percent, which leaves Westwood share of the cost at approximately twenty two point five million.
So we, I mean, we. Goes back to like, when we got the total money, it's a situation where we're probably not gonna see something this. Over a very long time, so it's it's a really.
It takes care of a lot of things. The primary driver is is getting the fifth graders out of middle school back into the elementary schools. Um.
And someone's gonna go to those federal funds, it might as well be us.
They're actually, it's a state, it's a state.
State one, it's supposed to.
A state bond mostly that was voted on a few years ago.
Okay, well, somebody's.
But we certainly want, we certainly want.
Should be.
And the Department of Education is excited that Westmark has applied, and we haven't, we haven't invested. Uh, we do a great job maintenance wise in all of our schools. They all look terrific, but we need some updating, and that's the reality of it. And getting those fifth graders out uh is is a a big driver, and anybody you talk to seems to understand that. Um, to do that, we have to make these changes, and every school will be touched, there will be improvements at each school. And it is up to, doesn't mean we have to spend seventy one million dollars, it's up to seventy one. And to acquire seventy one million dollars potentially of assets for twenty two and a half million dollar cost, um you're right. That's, that's a no brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah, if somebody asks me to put an addition on my house, I'm gonna pay two thirds of that, I'd be one, I'd have to put the addition on my house.
And I just from 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 the little I've seen until Shree, I I really haven't seen a lot about it. I'm feeling it's gonna be something we're gonna see the day of, and it's kind of the way it worked, even though we've been talking about it for a really long time. And I haven't seen a lot of people realizing that we're gonna get that much back, and I think that's a huge, however, people want to vote, I think that they should just know the facts of what what they're gonna be voting for.
I think we are, it it is a campaign that's getting out there at this point in time, and I I believe we'll we'll have a social media presence, and that's coming from me, who has no social media presence, but we will indeed have some social media presence. Yes, yes, there you go.
I know, yeah. Any other questions for Michael? Thank you, Mark.
Upcoming appointment, sewer use border review, appointment to fill a vacancy as an alternate member for a three year term. Sewer use border review, appointment to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a three year term, tax assessment, border review, appointment to fill a vacancy for a three year term. School building committee, recreation committee, appointment to fill a vacancy for a. School building committee, recreation committee, appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term, the Texas River Authority, appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term, the Texas River Authority, appointment or reappointment for a three-year term, Art and Village Redevelopment Agency, appointment or reappointment for a five-year term. Upcoming town council meeting and event, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, early voting begins for the school bond referendum. October seventh is our next regular town council meeting, October eighth is the school bond referendum held at the Civic Center. And October twenty-first is the next council meeting after that, public forum.
And actually, I think that's important, that everyone knows that there is just one polling place for the school bond referendum, and it is at the Civic Center.
What, what time is that again, Sam?
It is, um, from seven AM to eight PM.
And early voting begins here.
Here.
Thursday, normal hours for town, for the town hall is open.
Correct.
And mail ballots are also available.
Um, tomorrow is the deadline for mail ballot applications, so.
But people that typically receive them already have received them.
Correct.
So we do have a permanent mail ballot list, um, those applications are mailed out back in August, so we've already.
Thank you. Public comment? No public comment? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?